Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Today is March 14th, 2024 pursuant to Governor Haley's March 29th, 2023, signing the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law's 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This meeting in the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 145-533-641, or join the meeting via the online Microsoft Teams link through the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with the town's policy, the public can speak to any issue, hearing, or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. This is how the meetings are run. Sarah Clark, our central permitting officer, who's on my right, will read each application, and then there'll be a presentation by either the applicant or by their professional that they hire. And for the benefit of anybody that's not set in on our meetings in the past, we go through certain legal criteria, for example, massing. And, you know, there's 12 criteria, basically, and the applicants will talk to each of the criteria, and that is, you know, how the law provides, and that's how we do it. Topics such as scaling mass, adequacy of size, site for the project are always discussed at length. After the criteria are addressed by the applicant, the public receives an opportunity to speak in favor. Next, I will read the correspondences, and the public has an opportunity to speak against or ask questions, and then may be time for rebuttal. After that, the board asks questions. We vote to close the public hearing, and the board deliberates, as mentioned. We focus the deliberations on whether the projects meet the applicable criteria. Then we vote on the merits. To prevail, you need a four out of five vote, a supermajority per Mass. Law, and then we'll discuss conditions if applicable. We end the meeting with a verbal confirmation to adjourn and note the time. There's five minutes allowed for public comment, and the clock will start running as soon as you start talking. And please don't start talking till you get up to the microphone so it can be recorded. In addition to Sarah Clark, we have Chantel Kilkenny here from Community Development, and we usually have our building commissioner, but he is not able to attend today. And then we have Chatham TV, Mark Van Bork, and Brianna Fitzpatrick, who help us with that. And all our members are volunteer citizens who bring their best selves to every meeting. And today, we have all eight of us. There's three associates and five members voting today will be Virginia Fenwick, Lee Hovey, Paul Semple, Ed Acton, and Dave Veach. And this is Dave Nixon and myself. We are not going to vote today. But generally, the five members vote, and the three associates take turns. But we also have the opportunity to use our discretion and have other people vote. So that's how it's going to be today, and I think we need a motion from Paul for a minute.
Should we give a roll call with respect to the form of...
You should do that. Yeah, that's even a better motion.
Yeah.
If we could have a roll call vote to approve of this form of meeting. Virginia Fenwick.
Virginia approves.
Steve?
Steve DeBoer approves.
Lee?
Lee Hovey approves.
Paul?
Paul C. Semple approves.
Dave?
David H. Nixon approves.
Ed?
Ed Acton approves.
And Dave.
David H. Veach.
And I approve as well.
On that note, I will move to approve the minutes of our meeting from February 8, 2024, as published.
Dave Veach, seconds.
And Ginny?
Ginny approves.
Lee?
I approve.
Paul approves.
Dave, I mean, Ed?
Ed approves.
And Dave Veach approves.
Okay. First application?
Thirty minutes.
Yep, so the minutes. We voted on that. We just said that. First application. I haven't had a meeting in three weeks. We have to get back into the groove.
Application number 24-008, Philia Properties LLC, care of Creative Barnes, Inc., 159 Old Main Street, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. Owner of property located at 34 Long's Lane, also shown in the Town of Chatham's Assessors' map, 2A, Block 18, Lot PE18. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling in a nonconforming lot via the conversion of the existing garage to a family room. The building coverage will remain 1,392 square feet, 16.6%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 8,360 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the protective bylaw.
Okay, who is here to speak on 34 Long's Lane? Hello, sir. Please go up to the mic and state your case. Introduce yourself if you would.
Yeah, my name is Constantine with Creative Barnes, and I'm here to request variance for the subject property.
I think it's a special permit?
A special permit.
Yeah, big difference?
Yeah.
Do you have the criteria?
The criteria for a special permit?
Correct.
No.
Okay, we'll give you a copy of that, and then you can go through it if you want to approach. Come get it.
Yep.
Yeah, the applicant probably forgot to give that to you. So if you could just apply the facts of your case to the criteria when it's applicable, and if you don't think one of the criteria is applicable, just say "not applicable."
All right. Could you just give me a second?
Sure. We don't have the Jeopardy music, but...
So what I'm getting from this is, so basically, we're not increasing the footprint of the building. We're not changing anything. We're not changing the exterior look except removing the door, the garage door, and changing the windows. I have met with the family, and the main reason for them to seek that expansion as a family room is they have larger family, grandkids, kids, and they just don't have enough room in the existing house. And that's the main reason. So, again, meaning that we're not extending the footprint, we're not changing the look of the house dramatically, we're not seeking to do any drastic changes. I believe that's a reasonable request.
So you're saying that the size is adequate? That the size of the lot is adequate for the project, right?
Yeah.
And you're compatible with other structures in the neighborhood?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right? All right. And you're not increasing any nonconformities, are you?
Yeah, yeah. We're staying within the existing building, yeah.
And you think that the site is suitable?
Yeah.
And it doesn't impact neighborhood properties or the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, or storm runoff? Would you agree to all that?
Yeah.
Okay. And this impact of the scale, sighting, and mass on neighborhood visual character, you consider that to be acceptable?
Yeah.
And you're compatible with proposed neighborhood uses, yes?
Yeah.
All right, so in your view, it meets the criteria?
Yeah.
All right, so now what we'll do is we'll see if anybody in the audience or on Microsoft Teams wants to speak in favor of this application. If so, please indicate. Don't see anybody?
There's no one to speak in favor.
Okay, so now I'm going to read any of the correspondence that we got, which I believe is just one, from the health agent, which we always get. On 3/11/24, we got a note from Judith Giorgio, the health agent, saying, "I reviewed the plan to convert the garage of this property into a family room. The property was approved and septic installed for the existing three-bedroom property. No additional flow is proposed. I have no concerns." And that concludes the correspondence. Now, if there's anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to ask a question or has a problem with the application, please indicate.
There's no one with a question or an opposition.
All right, so now we're going to have questions from the board. Steve?
I have no questions.
Ginny?
Quick question. What is the... I'm looking at the proposed plan.
Yeah.
I just... Is it stairs that are in the middle of that picture that has the arrow going up?
So this is just an attic access?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, that's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Lee?
No questions.
You already said that. Paul?
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
No questions?
Nor do I.
Nor do I. So Paul, if I could have a motion to close the hearing?
I will move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach, seconds.
Ginny?
Ginny approves.
Steve?
Steve.
Actually, Steve's not voting today, sorry. I have to remember now. Lee?
I vote yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Ed?
Ed votes yes.
And Dave. Veach, yes.
All right, so deliberations. Dave Veach.
Certainly not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, more detrimental to the neighborhood. It meets all of the criteria as he presented, and it's a nice-looking project, and I will support it.
Okay, Ed?
I agree with Dave. It is a reasonable way to certainly expand a living space for the house, and I support it.
Paul, this is your neighborhood, isn't it?
It's close. It's close. I walk by there frequently, and it seems to be able to fit into the neighborhood. I think it's not substantially more detrimental.
And Ginny?
I agree with all my colleagues.
Lee?
I agree, too.
And Ed? Steve?
I agree. It's not creating further encroachments or anything. It's fine.
All right, so what about conditions?
I guess one question would be, when do you expect to do this work?
It will be dependent on the homeowner's availability and the house's availability. We were planning to start work pretty soon, but if, you know, if the homeowner says, "Let's wait until the season is over," we might start it in the fall. So it's either now and complete by the summer, or start in the fall and completing the off-season.
So the usual conditions probably would be?
So you would expect that you'd either start it now and have it completed by June 30th or so?
Yeah.
Or do it in the fall?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll move to approve the application as submitted, with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, that between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, that no work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave Veach, seconds.
And Ginny?
Ginny approves.
Lee?
I approve.
Paul?
Paul approves.
I approve.
And Dave.
Dave Veach approves.
All right, it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, 414 Fox Hill Road will be next when Sarah's ready.
Application number 23-120, Christopher J. LaCroix, Kathleen M. LaCroix, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 414 Fox Hill Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors' map, 11M, Block 5, Lot 2. The applicant seeks to reconstruct a pre-existing, nonconforming, private residential pier. The existing pier is nonconforming, and it is 112 feet long. The proposed reconstructed pier will be nonconforming in that it will be 112 feet long, where 80 feet is the maximum allowed. The property is located in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the protective bylaw. This was continued from January 11th, 2024.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of the LaCroix family. We're caught in a sort of regulatory... I think it might be a dead end, but some sort of loop. The existing pier and ramp and float have been unchanged since the mid-'50s. The original pier was built in the 1930s with a railway and a boathouse. Anyway, they shortened it sometime back in the '40s or '50s. When they shortened it, they did not... It was a licensed pier. They did not seek to amend the license to show the ramp and the float. So in the world where some people are given a lot of authority, we asked the Pleasant Bay Alliance, or the Conservation Commission asked the Pleasant Bay Alliance to comment, and because the ramp and float were not part of an amended license, they, in their infinite wisdom, decided that although they'd been in the water since 1958, they were new structures, and they recommended against them. So we're still trying to figure that out a little bit. We think we have a way, but I'd like a one-month continuance to see if we can work it out. That'd be it, really.
I think the next date that's available is May 23rd, if I remember right.
Could be getting ready for Memorial Day weekend. It's perfect.
That is what I'm currently scheduling applications for.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay, we have like five meetings in a row, so we don't really have any...
No, no, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so I think we need to take a vote on that.
I'll move to grant the requested continuance to May 23.
Dave Veach, seconds.
Ginny?
Ginny approves.
Lee?
I approve.
Ed?
I approve.
And Dave. Dave Veach approves.
All right, it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, 414 Fox Hill Road will be next when Sarah's ready.
Application number 24-009, James and Christine Fezio, care of Nicholas McKenzie, 101 Signal Hill Drive, Dennis, Mass. 02638. Owners of property located at 8 Arbuthnot Trail, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors' map, 9K, Block 56, Lot G1. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling in a nonconforming lot via the construction of a portico. The existing dwelling is nonconforming in that it is located 19.4 feet from Arbuthnot Trail. The proposed portico will be nonconforming in that it will be located 30.3 feet from Arbuthnot Trail, where a 40-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,040 square feet, 11.4%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,088 square feet, 11.5%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 17,900 square feet, where 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the protective bylaw.
Is there Nicholas McKenzie? Welcome.
Yeah, my name's Nicholas McKenzie. I'm the contractor doing the work, who happens to be my cousin who owns the house. And I don't have one of those criteria papers either, so...
All right, you have to come get it. We don't deliver. Yeah. They do come in your packages, but if you're not on the lookout for it, you've probably missed it.
I think the size is going to fit right in there. The house is 52 feet long, and it's only 8 wide, and the house is the smallest one in the neighborhood by far.
We're only talking about a portico, right?
Right, that's it. It's not near any vegetation, groundwater. The scale's definitely proportioned to the house. I don't think the neighbors are going to mind it. It's the ugliest house in the neighborhood now, so it's going to get cleaned up. So it wouldn't be a problem. Traffic, noise.
Not applicable?
With utilities, the lights are going to be on the side, not in the portico. I don't think the neighbors... Flood plane, not a problem. It's well up. It's only 6 by 8 wide, so I don't think it'd be a problem.
So it's compatible with proposed use, with neighboring uses, right?
Oh, yeah, it's a lot smaller than anything up there.
Okay, so is that your case?
That's it, I guess.
All right, very good. If there's anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor, please do so, or indicate. Looks like no one. And I will read the one correspondence we got from the health agent on March 11th, 2024. "I have no comments or concerns," says Judith Giorgio, "about this portico addition." Thank you. That's that. If there's anybody on Microsoft Teams or here that would wish to ask a question or speak against the application, please make it known. Seeing none, questions from the board. Dave Veach.
I have no questions.
Ed?
No questions.
Dave?
None.
Paul?
I have no questions.
Lee?
No questions.
And Steve?
No questions.
And Ginny?
No questions.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach, seconds.
Ginny?
Ginny approves.
Lee approves.
Paul approves.
And Veach approves.
All right, so deliberations. Dave?
Well, similar to what I said in the first... At the first tap, this is certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It's actually a nice improvement to the look of the house. It meets all of our applicable criteria, and I will support it.
Okay, Ed?
Yeah, I drove by the site yesterday or the day before. It looks like a lot of work going on there, a lot of...
Yeah, we're doing the inside, too. We get permits for that, and the outside's getting no windows, shingles, so it's going to look like a new house when it's done.
Yeah.
The house has been touched since '52.
I think all the neighbors will be happy, and it looks...
Well, they're going to be happy.
So I approve.
They're going to drive by it every time to come and go.
Yep.
Certainly not substantially detrimental.
Paul?
I agree with my colleagues.
Lee?
I agree with my colleagues as well.
Steve?
I agree.
And Ginny?
I agree.
All right, conditions?
I'm assuming that you're going to be able to keep off of that section of the road with your construction vehicles and so forth.
Yeah, we pack around a corner, and we get... Tuck them in near the driveway garage around. We're not worried about... We don't want to get hit either.
I noticed that that's what was happening when you were there before, and obviously, coming in off of the main drag, it's pretty tight, so that gives you some thought. And given that we're only dealing with a small portion of this project, I'm not sure that there's any need for any conditions. So I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
And Dave Veach, seconds.
Okay, Dave, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
I vote in favor.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
And Lee?
I vote yes.
And Ginny?
I vote yes.
It's unanimous. Congratulations.
All right, thank you. I'll lead this up here.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're on the last one already. Wow.
Why don't I?
Oh, 16 Surrey. Never mind. Okay, 16 Surrey Lane. Sarah?
Application number 24-010, James and Mary Sullivan, 16 Surrey Lane, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 16 Surrey Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors' map, 14F, Block 43, Lot ME7A. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling in a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling is nonconforming in that it is located 8.4 feet from the Easterly Abattoir, where a 15-foot setback is required. Proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,302 square feet, 8.3%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,273 square feet, 14.5%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 15,656 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 6 and 5B of the protective bylaw.
Okay, do we have James and Mary Sullivan? Is that James, I presume?
That would be me.
All right. Welcome. If you could just state your name for the record?
I'm James Sullivan. My wife, Mary, is over there. I will go through the 12 factors, which I did include in my application, but we'll go through them anyway. Okay, first is the adequacy of the size of the site, including but not limited to the maximum lot or building coverage. Our lot is 15,650 square feet, and on R20 zone, where 20,000 square feet is required. Our current house has 8.3% of lot coverage. The proposed addition would be 14.5, which is below the permissible 15% maximum. So there's plenty of land for the proposed addition. The compatibility and the size of the proposed structure with the neighboring properties. Currently, our house is 1,452 square feet. It's the smallest one on Surrey Lane. Like the neighboring properties, it's a one-and-three-quarter-story Cape-style house. The proposed addition will... It will be 2,834 square feet of living space. That size is fully compatible with the neighboring Surrey Lane properties, which range from 2,034 square feet to 3,079 square feet. The extent of the proposed increase in nonconforming nature of the structure...
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're on the last one already. Wow. Why don't I? Oh, sixteen Surrey, sorry, nevermind. Okay, sixteen Surrey Lane. Sarah?
Application number twenty-four dash zero one zero, James and Mary Sullivan, sixteen Surrey Lane, Chatham, Mass. zero two six three three. Owners of property located at sixteen Surrey Lane, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, fourteen F, block forty-three, lot ME seven A. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located eight point four feet from the Easterly Abutter where a fifteen-foot setback is required. Proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration and under the second except clause of section six of Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is one thousand three hundred and two square feet, eight point three percent, and the proposed building coverage is two thousand two hundred seventy-three square feet, fourteen point five percent, where fifteen percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty-six square feet where twenty thousand square feet is required in the R twenty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight, section six, and section five B of the protective bylaw.
Okay, do we have James and Mary Sullivan? Is that James, I presume?
That would be me.
All right. Welcome, if you could just state your name for the record.
I'm James Sullivan, my wife Mary is over there. I will go through the twelve factors, which I did include in my application, but we'll go through them anyway. Okay, first is the adequacy of the size of the site, including but not limited to the maximum lot or building coverage. Our lot is six, or fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty square feet and on our twenty zone where twenty thousand square feet is required. Our current house has eight point three percent of lot coverage. The proposed addition would be fourteen point five, which is below the permissible fifteen percent maximum. So there's plenty of, of land for the, the proposed addition. The compatibility and the size of the proposed structure with the neighboring properties. Currently, our house is fourteen hundred and fifty-two square feet. It's the smallest one on Surrey Lane. Like the neighboring properties, it's a one and three-quarter story Cape-style house. The proposed addition will, it will be two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four square feet of living space. That size is fully compatible with the neighboring Surrey Lane properties, which range from two thousand thirty-four square feet to three thousand and seventy-nine square feet. The extent of the proposed increase in non-conform, uh, in non-conforming nature of the structure or use, the proposed addition will increase the living space, but will not increase any of the non-conformities. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on the neighboring properties, natural environment, slopes, vegetation, et cetera. Our lot's generally flat. It's tree and hedge-lined, has a Cape Cod lawn. The proposed addition will replace part of the lawn area. It will not impact the slopes, natural vegetation. There are no wetlands near the property that will be impacted and it will remain our, our single-family year-round residence. The impact of the scale, sighting, mass on neighborhood and visual character, as can be seen from the proposed drawings, the addition will appear from the front of the house to be a garage addition on the westerly side. The, above the garage addition will have a dorm around the back. And the existing garage would be converted to a family room, so the garage door that exists will be replaced with a window. So it will pretty much look the same, just a little bigger. The compatibility, the proposed use with the neighboring uses, it is our house, it will remain our house, and we will continue to live there. So it's fully compatible with how it's used and how our neighbors use their houses. The adequacy and method of sewage disposal, water runoff, the proposed addition, we'll use the existing septic system. The septic tank will have to be skidded to get the ten-foot required distance from the proposed addition, but the rest of the house will stay the same. Impact on traffic flow and safety, there will be no effect on the traffic flow in the neighborhood. We will still come when we get home and leave when we leave. Noise and litter, it's just gonna stay, that's really not relevant, it's just gonna remain our house. Adequacy of utilities, no impact there. We do have our neighbor, the electrician here, who will probably come over and do some wiring. Uh, the visual impact, the house will continue to look pretty much the same it is it does now, a cedar shingle Cape Cod-style home, just like the rest of them in the neighborhood. And the, the house is not anywhere near a flood plain, so the twelfth factor is not really relevant. So when all the factors are considered, it's clear the proposed addition will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than our existing house. So we request the granting of a special permit.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? You do, sir? Okay, please go to the mic.
Peter Shock, I live at seventeen Surrey Lane, right across the street. Jim and Mary, great neighbors. The, we've gone over the design and they've been, let all the neighbors be a part of what's actually, is gonna be built. And just excited for the project, think it's gonna be great.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Either here or on Microsoft Teams? Seeing none? Okay, correspondences. There are three. Health agent, three eleven twenty-four, "I've reviewed the plan," says Judith Giorgio, "and the plan, the plan in addition to this property. The property is approved for four bedrooms. The proposal is to relocate two existing bedrooms to the addition, maintaining four bedrooms. The septic tank will need to be relocated to meet the offsets to the new addition." Then there's a letter from Robin and Daniel DeCarlo from seventy-four Eldridge Square. As neighbors of, that was on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, "As neighbors of James and Mary Sullivan, we are in full support of the plans for their addition and special permit for sixteen Surrey Lane." And then one more from seventy-one Eldridge Square by Susan and Gordon Melville. "As seasonal residents of Chatham, since two thousand and four, we've had the pleasure of knowing our neighbors, Jim and Mary. We recently expanded our home to spend more time there in the coming years. We enthusiastically support Jim and Mary's petition for a special permit to allow for the proposed expansion that'll be more suitable to their family needs and better support year-round living. The proposed addition is consistent with the surrounding property's size and character and will improve the neighborhood. We strongly recommend the board vote to support the Sullivan's request." And she wrote that on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. That concludes the correspondence. Is there anybody that would like to ask a question or speak against this application, either here or on Microsoft Teams? Please indicate. Seeing none? Questions from the board? Dave Veach.
I, I have no questions.
Ed?
Uh, no questions.
Dave?
No questions.
Paul?
No questions.
Lee?
I have a quick question regarding mechanicals. Do you have a plan for AC condensers and/or generator? And where are you gonna put them?
No generator, the AC will be behind the house.
Behind the house, perfect. Thank you.
Steve?
Can you just sort of, what are you gonna do with the driveway now that the, the existing garage is not gonna be a garage anymore?
The driveway's gonna, as you see, it's just gonna be a circle or.
It's, so it's gonna remain sort of the double.
Yeah, it's gonna stay there. It's, it's probably not gonna look exactly like that, that's pretty extensive, but yeah, we'll have just a circle in the front and we'll shorten what goes to where the existing garage is. So no need to get in there.
Right, okay.
And Jenny? Oh, sorry.
No, no, that's it, that's it.
Yep.
I have no questions.
Okay, so you're gonna almost double the house, is that the way you see it? The, the living area?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that was my only comment. At this point, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds.
And Jenny? Vote on that?
Jenny votes yes.
Lee votes yes.
All votes yes?
Ed?
Ed votes yes.
And Veach votes yes.
Okay. Deliberations? David Nixon?
I don't see any reason to think that this would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. He's addressed all the criteria, thought in a.
You can go back up, sir.
Perfect way. And I think the special permit should be approved.
Okay, Ed?
First of all, I wanted to applaud and I guess, thanks, James, for typing up the criteria and submitting in there, that was, that was, that was very helpful. I don't see any issues with the project, all the neighbors are in support, certainly not substantially detrimental, and I have no issues.
Dave?
I agree with the previous and I will support it.
Paul?
I agree with my colleagues and I also appreciate the narrative that you typed out. You covered all the bases and did a good job. Thank you.
And Lee?
I think it's gonna be a fantastic addition and will be a good addition to the neighborhood.
Steve?
I think it's a nice project. I think most of it's, you know, hidden from, behind the house, the majority of the work is behind the house and not visible from the street, and you're respecting the sideline setbacks. I think it's a nice project.
And Jenny?
So I agree with my colleagues, a couple things to add. Mr. Sullivan, you did a nice job with the presentation. I agree with, with Ed that it's nice to have the written summary, it was excellent. I also like to have the stepping back of the garage, I think that's really nicely done. I, I thought that that was visually very attractive. And I also appreciate the renovation of a nineteen fifty-two house. You know, you have a lot of options and I, I really applaud the thoughtful renovation. Yes, you are within seventy square feet of doubling the house, but it, but it works, it makes sense. And so very nicely done, and you've been there for twenty-five years, so I would, I would support this.
And I, I would just add that, you know, you're maxing out everything that you can on that lot, but you're doing it very tastefully. And often, if you're gonna max out a lot and double the size, we'll have lots of problems. But as you can see, you, you, you know what you're doing, so congratulations. A vote with, a vote, conditions and.
Yeah, I would just ask, Mr. Sullivan, what's your plan on construction? When do you plan to do this?
If you would ask my wife, she would say tomorrow. If you ask the frugal Yankee, he will say, you have to make sure we have all the money. So we'll probably start it not this fall, but next fall.
Okay. So do you have any objection to our standard conditions that we would supply?
No, no objection.
All right. I noticed that there's a mason that's been working at twenty-six Eldridge or Surrey.
Yes.
For quite a while. And it can end up being an obstruction of the traffic there after a while. Thank you, okay. I'll move to approve the application with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. That between June thirtieth and Labor Day, there'd be no exterior construction allowed, no work would be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity would be between eight AM and five PM only.
Dave Veach seconds.
Okay, Jenny?
Jenny approves.
Lee?
Lee approves.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Ed votes yes.
Uh, Veach votes yes.
Okay, and I would just remind you that it's a good a two-year limitation on the permit, so you might wanna listen to your wife. We usually are, right?
Yes, ma'am. Just as wine.
Okay. Down that way? Yep. And last but not least, right? Two sixteen Wilford Road.
Application number twenty-four dash zero one two, Jerome and Eileen Murphy, care of William R. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box seven oh seven, Chatham, Mass. zero two six three three. Owners of property located at two sixteen Wilford Road, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, ten G, block seventeen, lot B I A. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located fourteen point six feet from the Westerly Abutter where a fifteen-foot setback is required. The proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration and under the second except clause of section six of Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is one thousand fifty-six square feet, eight point five percent, and the proposed building coverage is one thousand four hundred sixteen square feet, eleven point three percent, where fifteen percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains twelve thousand five hundred square feet where twenty thousand square feet is required in the R twenty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight, section six, and section five B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Riley?
Good afternoon, Bill O'Reilly, on behalf of the Murphys. I think today's agenda is a good, a good example of why the bylaw should be revised. Because, I mean, as, just as a, for instance, in Harwich, if you're making a change to a building, even on a non-conforming lot, if you're not, if, if you're not encroaching on the setbacks, you know, you don't need to go to the zoning board. So like this application, couple of the other applications, you know, would've just gotten a building permit, you know, instead of having plans done, taking time, taking your time.
I don't think a critique of the bylaw is on agenda today, so we'll leave it at that.
Perhaps Mr. Riley's running for president or something like that, I don't know.
I mean, somebody has to understand, that's all. I mean, you guys, what, five meetings in, five weeks in a row?
Starting today is five.
Yeah, so it's, it's your time too.
We're just warming up on this one.
Mr. Riley, you're, you're an expert at whining, and this is a perfect example. And for those who don't know, year after year, Mr. Riley gets voted best whiner in Chatham.
Well, as long as, as long as you make it clear that I'm not drinking the wine or the Kool-Aid. Okay, could you put the plan up for me, please? Okay, so this is an example of a modest application in a modest neighborhood. So the Murphys wanted to create an addition that would give them a decent-sized dining room and a screen porch, so they can enjoy the outdoors without being bug-bitten. They're, they're there between White Pond and Black Pond and Emery Pond and, so I think it's really an intelligent modification of the property. You've all been there, it's a very modest neighborhood, Wilford Road. I don't know if you know, Wilford Road, Wilford was, that road is named after Wilford Bearabee, the guy who gave the airport to the town. Anyway, so a very modest change and I think that, you know, this is something that is easily approvable. So let me find my paper. Just do a quick run-through on the criteria. So adequacy of the size of the site in terms of size of the proposed use, we're just increasing from eight point three to eleven point three, or eight point five to eleven point three, a very modest change. Other than small encroachment on the left-hand side, the building meets all the setbacks and coverage. The ridge is fifteen feet below the maximum height, and the addition ridge will be three feet below that ridge, so it really is modest, very much in keeping with the neighborhood. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. The, I noticed nobody else mentioned gross floor area today, but I have a sheet that's a gross floor area that shows you that the size of the building, as, as modified, is still below most of the buildings in the neighborhood. The, so the extent of the proposed increase in non-conforming nature of the structure is that we're, we're increasing the living area on a non-conforming lot, because it's an R twenty lot now, it used to be R ten. So it's twelve thousand five hundred square feet, increasing the living area under Branford, that means we need a special permit. Suitability of the site, again, you know, it's, it's a very label, apparent level site and the, and there are no wetlands or, or water bodies close by. Also wanna point out that the road surface is almost twenty feet from the lot line, so just to point out how far away we are from the, from the actual road surface. So impact of scale, sighting, and mass on neighborhood visual character. You know, it's just a very modest design change, very much in keeping with the existing structure. I think that, I think it's easy to find that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The compatibility of the proposed use for neighboring uses, it's a single-family house and a single-family neighborhood. Are they are on town sewer, municipal water? And we don't think there'll be any impact on traffic flow and safety or noise and litter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here? Obviously not here, present, but on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor? If so, indicate. No? And correspondences? There was just one from Judith Giorgio, the health agent, written on three eleven twenty-four, "I reviewed the plan to an addition, for an addition to this property, it's connected to municipal sewer and no additional flow is proposed. I have no concerns at this time." Is there anybody that would like to speak against, either here or on Microsoft Teams? Please indicate. Seeing none, questions from the board? I could, I could ask you all if you have any questions, or you could go through.
Yeah, she could always just skip to the vote.
We could, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna just err on the side of caution. Jenny, questions?
No questions.
Steve?
No questions.
Lee?
No questions.
Paul?
Let me just ask you, one ninety-six Wilfred is back off the road and is really sort of flunting on the pond.
That's correct.
Concept. And then right next to that is, when you look at the, the site, I was a little confused about what that was. Is there, is there a little house there or a shack?
I don't know, it belongs to Jamie Bassett, so I don't know.
Oh.
Those of you who know Jamie, he's a.
I do.
Yeah, so, I mean, he, he's a, he's his own individual. He went to, he was in my daughter's class, going through the heart, at Chatham School, so I've known Jamie for a long, long time.
Okay.
So, but, you know, that's sort of Bassettville. That, you know, Ivan Bassett lives right behind, Jeff Bassett used to live there. I mean, it was, so it's probably a property inherited, it's just.
Looks, looks a little bit like a compound, in effect, everything is open there to each other. I'm asking that question in part because I'm thinking about conditions in the future and, and whether any construction at that location is gonna be a problem for neighbors.
I can't imagine that it, that it is. The. The, as I, as I indicate, if you look on the site plan, I mean, there's almost 20 feet between the edge of the travel surface and the house, so there's plenty of room. The, it's just a frost wall that they're building, so they're not putting a full foundation in. So I think that, candidly, I don't think any conditions are required for a project this small, where there's this amount of room on the lot, and the, and, you know, they're all neighbors. I mean, they've all been there a long time, so I think we're just...
Okay, I have no other questions.
I would just ask you about the bike trail, you know, being, that's a lot of bike traffic there, so...
That's correct.
That's just something to think about when we get to conditions.
In general, the bike traffic's on the other side of the street, but...
Okay, all right. Questions?
No questions.
Ed?
All right, no questions?
No questions.
All right.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds.
Vote on that?
Jenny approves.
Lee?
I approve.
All votes yes?
Ed?
I approve.
And Veach votes yes.
All right. Deliberations? Dave Veach?
Small, very small project, very, you know, it's, it's nice to, to see a modest proposal like this come before us, certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It meets all the criteria, and I will support it.
Okay. Ed?
Same here, I'll support it. It seems very reasonable, and certainly will fit in with the, the neighborhood.
Ed?
Very reasonable.
Paul?
I agree with my colleagues, yes.
And Lee?
I agree, too.
Steve?
I agree with him.
And Jenny?
I agree.
Okay.
I will move to approve the application as submitted. I think the only condition I would suggest is that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, given that there's room for that, and it is the bike trail area.
Right. Oh, yeah, no, we have no objection to that app, that requirement.
Dave Veach seconds.
Okay. Jenny?
Jenny votes yes.
And Lee?
I vote yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Ed?
Ed votes yes.
Veach votes yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
It's unanimous. Yes, all right. And that concludes...
We need one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Dave Veach seconds.
Okay. Jenny?
Jenny votes yes.
Do we all vote on that?
Yes.
Steve?
I vote to adjourn.
Lee?
I vote yes.
Paul?
I'll vote yes.
Ed?
Yes.
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 And yes. And what time is it?
4:50 PM.
All right. Good, good night, Chatham.[1743.25]